Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, September 1st, 2022. Just a reminder, recording device will be used during this meeting. I'm going to open the meeting up with public comment on agenda items and reminding everybody, rules of conduct for public meetings established by Resolution 2008. The time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of this meeting. Do we have any public comment for agenda items? Mr. Rollings?
Can you come up?
Yes, sir, please.
We got some mic.
VIPs only, Bruce.
That's good. Good morning, thank you. The, on the, I got up on my glasses because I can't see what I wrote. In reference to new business 6C in the TND1, we had discussions about that at the last task force meeting, and that's basically taking 800 square foot minimum floor plan and bumping it up to 1,100 square feet. I thought we had left that for discussion at the next task force meeting and the planning commission meeting. We did not have a planning commission meeting like we normally do before the meeting tonight. I would like to make sure that we, before you approve it, that we have a chance to discuss that in the planning commission and finalize it in the next task force meeting. That's, I know it's on the next, and I know Carl says that you and Jason and Carl are anxious to get that bumped up as a minimum of 1,100, and most everybody in the planning, in the task force disagreed with that. So I would just like to, I'm asking for-
I don't have a problem with the planning commission having any say in it. However, I think it's important that we get this, you know, things are piling up.
Well, I don't, and Carl, Carl, you're very, you're very good at pushing, keeping things moving along, and we agree with that. If we have, I just want to make sure we have a-
I've also modified what I'm going to present today.
Well, I have to talk about it ahead of time because that's-
Correct.
...the schedule, so.
Understood, yeah, perfect. So I guess, I haven't had a chance to talk to Carl, but if he modified something and you want to talk about that, we'll reopen this up again. But I agree with what you're saying, I don't have a problem, but I don't want to kick this down the lane too far and then-
Yeah, I'd just like the planning commission can look at it again next, next week around our plan commission, and then we can keep things moving along. I just think you want to use the planning commission as a tool to help the township, so I just want to feel, have a chance to allow them to do that.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to get the opportunity to be included in the discussions around item 6B, historic resource issue. So when that issue comes up, I'd like to participate.
Could you remind me by just putting your hands up when we get there, just in case I forget?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Where does one get the agenda?
So this is for the agenda, so anything that's on, oh, I'm sorry, it's probably, is it on the back table?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, was a new one.
Mr. O'Neal would also be a speaker for 6B as the author of the letter.
Okay. Got it. All right. Anybody else for agenda items? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the minutes of the previous meeting, Board of Supervisors, August 18th, 2022, AM session.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the August 18th morning session. Actually, that's the afternoon, the evening session.
And I will, yeah, you're, you're right.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. So I'll, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, authorization paid bills and approve the payroll?
I make a motion that we authorize the payment of the bills and approve the dispersment of the payroll.
And I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't believe we have any reports today, and we have no old business. We're going to move on to new business for the draft official map and ordinance for planning commission review, and I'll turn that over to Luke.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman. As a result of Act 65 of 2021, which prohibits last minute amendments to the agenda, staff has kind of taken a speculative approach to items that may be discussed at a, at a meeting. This morning, unfortunately, I do not have an updated draft official map nor ordinance for your consideration. The action item today would have been to refer a draft official map and draft ordinance to the planning commission for their review. I'd respectfully ask that you table the matter until your PM meeting in September.
Great, thank you. You might as well keep going for the correspondence for, for Mr. O'Neal's historic resource request.
Well, sure, I'm not a primary source here. We actually have representative, the, the author of the letter in, in the audience, and you may want to hear directly. I will say, from a staff perspective, staff is in receipt of a letter directed to the historical commission, the board of supervisors, and to township staff regarding a historic resource in the township. And with that, if, I can characterize the letter, or we can just go straight to the source.
Yeah, Mr. O'Neal, you're welcome to come up.
Good morning, gentlemen, and Lisa, the only one here. My wife and I are petitioning the township to remove two of our properties from the historic commission list. The reason for that, there's many, mostly to do with, we just want our privacy. There's so many rules and regulations that the township has, and so many hoops to jump through. I just don't need to deal with one more, and that's a town commission. That's number one. Number two, there are issues with it that I think the township makes rules and regulations and doesn't even enforce them for that matter. There's a, part of the regulation is no structure is to be built within 150 feet of a historic building such as we own, yet a neighbor builds a shed within 60 feet. I like my neighbor. I don't want to have to tell her to take it down, and I don't want you to have to tell her to take it down, but they're the rules. So what does one do in this situation? I can either declassify the building and her shed can stay, it's on her property, but what we're really doing with this historic commission thing, not only are we telling the O'Neills, Terry O'Neal and Kay O'Neal, what to do with their land, we're telling the neighbors next door what they can do with theirs. Does that make sense to anybody in here? Doesn't to me. You guys gave her the permit, allegedly according to her, we'll, we'll see, but if in fact you permitted and let her do it, if she has to take it down because of this, this is just one example of what goes on. So that's something for you guys to consider. Secondly, there is not one thing in the historic commission thing that's beneficial to the landowners, to the people that are trying to save historic districts, and that's what we do. The place we're in right now, 425, it was derelict when we bought it, it was broken down. It's going to be on Chester County Day in another month or so. Normally, we don't open it up because we like the privacy, but this year, it's a breast cancer thing, so we're going to open it up. Trust me, it's, it's nice, it's what you folks want. We just don't want your rules. We're up to here with the rules. You know better than anybody, Luke, I am sickened by the fact that you guys made me come in on the 11th hour before I pulled the permit for a new historic thing and signed some document that says you can come on my property to inspect a stormwater management. You must be kidding. You don't need permission and you don't need a warrant. You can just come on my property. You know it's unconstitutional. I do, everybody in this room knows it's unconstitutional. I can't believe you're doing this, but this is where the township is going, and when the township decides to start taking those things, those steps, we say, no, no, we don't want to be a part of that. I can't believe you're still doing this. And Lisa, you know as well as anybody, you don't even tell the, the, the person that's doing the work until like the night before, where in my case, I think in your case-
This is, Mr. O'Neal, this is a board of supervisors, so obviously, please address everything to the supervisors.
Okay, all right, supervisors. I think some people on the board know how it's, how it's played. Anyhow, that's not here or there for the historical commission, but it shows where the township is going as far as grabbing power. I would just as soon not be part of it for a number of reasons, and there are bylaws in the historic commission on how to get out of it. Even me coming up here this morning, why should I have to do this? I own a historic building. I don't know whoever granted it the historic status. I think Jim might try to address that. I know I was in my house, no, when it was done, nobody came and asked me if we're interested. I just want to get out from underneath the rules and regulations. We want our privacy. Honestly, by listing these properties without our consent, I, I'm not so sure you can do that. Wouldn't you need eminent domain or something? I'm not a lawyer, I don't want to bring a lawyer into this, it's just one more hassle. You're taking something from me, you do know that. When I go to sell this, some people might look at it and say, oh, it's got a historical registry, I won't be able to put purple shutters on it. I don't know. But in every single phase, you're giving up something. I like the historical commission, I wanted to sit on the board, I really did, until I read front to back, and I thought, this is nothing but a bunch of rules that East Brandywine Township wants to burden people with. There's nothing in there that's advantageous to the property owner. It's almost like the signs you see going around, you know, we've saved this land, we saved this property, I think you guys are listed, a lawyer's listed, somebody else is listed, but I always find it amazing that the landowner that signed it up, they're not listed. Meh, maybe it's egotistical, I don't know. But it's just rules by the township, and I, I'm not good with rules. That's it. So if you could take me off the register, I'll still approve the houses, that's what we do, that's my hobby. We're working on place 621, it was derelict, it was unlivable, it was fall down condition. It's really cool now, and it's even going to be cooler, whether you put rules and regulations on me or not. So, there you go.
Just real quick, I do want to respond to the stormwater issue. As stormwater has become a bigger and bigger issue, the state of Pennsylvania directed us to do certain, take certain measurements. So I guess what I want to clarify with, for everybody is, it's not just you. I had to sign one as well, and the stormwater is something that the county mandates, that the township takes care of, making sure it is operational and running correctly. I will say, there's been back properties from years and years ago that had stormwaters on, stormwater basins on them that have failed, and they didn't fill out paperwork, and then it affected them when they had to sell their, their properties. So it is an issue, clearly. The township does not like to impede on people's property or their rights in order to maintain, to make sure they're being maintained. However, that being said, if it came down to you getting ready to sell and the next person bought it, it's just something that would alleviate a headache of a court case possibly, if it wasn't maintained or it wasn't done up to standards, and I think that that's the whole issue with the, with the stormwater. Regarding the, the historic commission, I would have to, obviously, I just got the letter, I think it was sent yesterday, so I haven't even, I read it, but I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody about it, but obviously, we will take your considerations, you know, to heart here, I understand your, your concerns.
The stormwater management is fine, and the inspection of stormwater management is fine. The notion that somebody from the township can come on my property without permission is ludicrous. All you have to do is call, you're more than welcome. Who is this person that's going to come on my property? Are they going to be armed?
Yeah, I would expect that if, for stormwater, it would be one of our, one of our vendors, vendors that we use for, for the stormwater, you know, like Panoni, I think would probably be one. Maybe Matt Van Lou, or I'm sorry, Cedarville, Matt Van Lou, maybe are-
But why can't they just make an appointment, and if it's a real issue, get a warrant?
And I was going to say, I think that we would always go that route first, we would reach out to the, to the homeowner.
But that's not the way it's written, and that's not what was-
Right.
-signed on.
Understood.
And that, we wanted to strike three words from it, and we would have been okay with it, but we weren't allowed to, because of course, you do this the day before you get your permit. So you signed it under duress, let's be honest. You've done your engineering, you've done this, you've done that, you've done this, and you look at this form, and it says, you can come on property no matter what. And if we're really concerned about stormwater management, let's worry about the 100,000 gallons that comes onto my property every storm, and just goes through and ravages, runs through the creek, and I know we've been through it, well, that's not our responsibility. That's state responsibility or something, I don't know, it's a pipe this big, well, there's two of them. So if we're really worried about the health and safety of the township, why wouldn't we worry about that? That's a real problem. You don't need a night inspector to come out, and look at that, you can go out and look at that right now in a, in a storm, and you can see it's causing all sorts of damage. There's a rut in the woods this deep, you can walk through it, it's up to here, and then it runs down to the creek and it pollutes the creek. And yet, we're going to have like little secret guys coming out at night checking on stuff. No, I, again, I'm, I'm so offended by what we had to sign, and, and we know what it is, it's that one little tag that you really don't need permission. And I, I'm surprised the state mandated that, or made you put that language in there. I asked if we could just delete that one little bit, and I wouldn't, nope, can't do it.
No, I want to clarify, I didn't say the state mandated we put out that statement, the state mandated that we are responsible for the upkeep maintenance, making sure that the residents are taking care of it, the township has done their due diligence in making sure that it was designed properly, so there's a trickle down effect, understood.
Right.
But, well, thank you very much, obviously, we'll take your considerations at, at heart, and the board will have a discussion with the solicitor and see what we can do to help you on the other issue.
Okay, and just so you know, yes, these properties are well taken care of, they're going to be beautiful, we're respecting the historic value of them, we just don't want them listed for a number of reasons, lastly of which is privacy.
Understood.
All right?
Thank you, sir.
Lisa and gentlemen.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to, Carl, I'm going to turn it over to you for the ordinance amendment.
All right, thank you.
I, I'm sorry, there, there was an earlier reservation of comment on that? Jim, did you, I'm sorry, you're in charge, Mr. Chairman, as a reminder, there was an earlier reservation on that point.
I'll just make a couple of general comments. I know Mr. O'Neal, and I know where he lives and historic resource, I understand his desire and, and he understands the value of history and historic resources, and what he's done with his property is fantastic, what he's doing with the property that he just purchased at the corner of Dowling Forge Road and, and Rock Raymond is, is, is good. But I, I'd just like to say, the historical commission hasn't seen this yet, I can't speak for the historical commission, but we would like the opportunity to give input on this issue. That's, those are my only comments this morning.
Thank you.
Okay, Carl? Okay. Not sure where to start. Let's start with, at the, the zoning ordinance task force meetings, there had been an area that was of concern to me, and I expressed my concern to other supervisors in a public meeting several months ago. We've had some discussions on the size of a unit that occupies space above a retail area, which is what that refers to. During the discussion, I guess it was last Wednesday, our meeting, during the discussion last Wednesday, I've, I've attended that meeting through, through a teleconference hookup, where the sound quality wasn't always 100% on my end, and I'm sure it wasn't on your end. So some of the points that the ordinance task force were making, and some of the points that I was making, I think were misinterpreted by both myself and the ordinance task force. My concern on the 800 square feet as being the minimum is that I didn't want that for new construction, whereas if it's any existing building, and I think this is where the ordinance task force was, any existing building that wants to rehabilitate itself and have apartments above, it was for buildings that would have retail on the ground floor and apartments above, and since it's an existing building, building, the smaller units were more appropriate. So with Luke's help, we went back through the zoning regulations and found out that the township already actually has a minimum dwelling size for anything new. Is that, that's not in our packet, is it? That-
No. The, the definition section of the zoning of our land use code has a reference to the definition of dwelling unit, and the, the standard for all zones for minimum dwelling unit size is 950-
950 square feet.
-in the definition section. There is a distinct reference to a smaller number in what is on the agenda, which is chapter 399, section 40.
Correct. And so therefore, my concern, concern, I don't speak for myself, self, the other supervisors can comment, but, is that we had something larger than 800 square feet for new construction, and we do. So therefore, the 800 square feet has to be looked at, what was the purpose of the 800 square feet, and that was primarily for existing buildings. So what I'm proposing is a zoning change is not 1,100 square feet, but leave the 800 feet as is, but add the wording under dwellings in combination with non-residential use. I would add, the dwelling must be in a structure contributing to a historic resource, which is really what the purpose was, I believe, from the ordinance task force. So I think I am proposing something that meets both the ordinance task force point of view and my point of view as a, as a supervisor.
Yes, it sounds good.
Sounds good?
Yes.
Because quite frankly, it's only in TD, T1, which is, which is almost totally historic structures.
Right. We just want to give the historic people a chance to-
Correct.
-get their value as they possibly can get it.
Right, and I was trying to limit new construction-
Right.
-not knowing we already had a minimum that's, whether it's reasonable or not, that's for another discussion, but another day. The 950.
Right.
So, so that's my proposal to change the zoning ordinance, and that's what, we can refer back to the planning commission.
I, I think it'd be good just to refer it to the planning commission next week.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, Mr. O'Neal. I think your suggestions are great and what we have, and we'll take it to the planning commission next week, and then-
Yeah, we'll put it on the next agenda after that, yeah.
Okay, very good. So I, I learned a lot, and I got my goals accomplished, and I think they fit in with what the ordinance task force was talking about. Okay, thank you.
Can we take a recess for one minute?
Sure.
Okay, we're going to pick back up and go on to the Mapleview Phase 3 financial security release, and I'll turn that over to Luke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff is in receipt of a recommendation from township engineer Panoni to approve Phase 3 financial security release number one for the Mapleview development. As before, I'm a second, a secondary source for this, the township engineer is in the audience, should you have any questions. But at this time, staff would respectfully ask the board to consider this escrow release.
I'm sorry, who, who's here in the audience?
Nate.
Nate?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Township engineer.
I'm sorry. Nate, I'm assuming you don't have any concerns?
Nope, no, this is for phase, first one for Phase 3, they're plugging along on Phase 3. We're holding money on this phase, we're holding money on the previous phases, we know there's still some global issues over there, we've got a meeting with the Conservation District actually next week, so, you know, we're going to keep holding money back so we feel safe, we've got enough to make sure any issues can get addressed.
Okay.
I have questions. Nate, I have a few standard questions.
Sure.
The as-built plans is budgeted for $8,000, I don't think that's an adequate amount.
Okay.
I know you can't change it now, but-
Well, it's, that's just for that phase, there's three phases, so in total, there's probably closer to maybe over 20,000 for as-built plans.
I understand that. Also, I thought in escrow agreements, there's usually a contingency line item, and there's none in this one.
I don't have that one in front of me this second.
I'm, yeah, my question is, I may have missed it.
Have you got it handy?
There is a 10% construction contingency?
Yeah, it should be.
The second line from the bottom on page three of three-
Yep.
-and what you were just handed.
Page three?
Yeah, second to the last line.
My thing doesn't have page number, there it is, three, second to the last, the construction, there it is, it's way over there, okay. All right, well, those were my two questions. Again, I think we're always kind of light on the act.
Yeah, I'll keep, I'll keep that in mind, as some of these new projects come, come up in the, and we get security for those, I'll keep that in mind going forward, Carl.
And the reason I have the concern, concern, just so you understand, it's not trying to be a problem, but a lot of times, the developers, if there's only a small amount, and to do the as-built plans is going to cost more than that small amount, why do it?
Yep, no, that's a fair comment, appreciate it.
I mean, so, okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn, turn it over-
Sorry, is, is our motion to, to do the escrow release, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, if you want to make a motion, if you're-
I make a motion that we approve the release number one for the Mapleview Phase 3.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll turn it over to Matt then for the stormwater cleaning.
Thank you. We have received a proposal from Mr. Rehab to video and clean storm sewer pipes throughout the township. We've found through our visual inspection of these pipes that, that they are failing, and previously, in the Aspen Drive project, Mr. Rehab did the same thing, they, they did the inspection, they cleaned the pipes, and then were able to determine whether they were viable to, to line, which they, they were able to align those particular pipes. So what I'm proposing is to ask in the board to approve a proposal from Mr. Rehab for the cleaning and the, the video of the, these pipes. They're located, there's three on Kristen Circle, which are 36-inch crosspipes, one on Nolan Drive, which is a 15-inch pipe, and then two on Gloucester, and then one on Brantwood. And the, the estimated cost for the, the cleaning is $11,000. And then, like I said, after that, they will, they will be able to determine whether these particular pipes can be relined or not.
Is this an amount that is budgeted in a general fund, your department?
This, in 2021, there was $100,000 budgeted from Liquid Fuels for the Aspen Drive project. This, this particular work is not, although it's through Co-Stars, is not approved to be done through Liquid Fuels.
Right.
So we switched some funds around, we, we took more money out of Liquid Fuels for the road program, and then paid for this out of the, well, the general fund, but out of-
Right, but it's not, not a budgeted item, it's an, it's an item you're funding through transfers.
Correct.
To sum it up briefly?
Yes.
Okay. Is that something we should, should consider budgeting for in the future?
Yes, I believe so, and in anticipation of paving, that's why we went out and inspected the, the pipes, so that there should be an additional, we've, we've already-
But my concern is if it's not budgeted, then it's hard for us to be managing the budget.
Correct.
I know it has to be done, so you took that away this year by transferring from the Liquid Fuels more, more to do the road work, which freed up other monies in your department.
Correct.
Which is an okay way to do it, but not the preferred way.
Right. And at the time of- And at the time of budgeting during 2021, I was not aware that the pipe lining was not able to be paid for out of Liquid Fuels. That's why that budget line item was out of Liquid Fuels.
Thank you. I'd make a motion, we approve the Rehab, Mr. Rehab's quotation for the sewer work on the aforementioned sewer lines.
May I suggest that we also reference that it is part of Co-Stars contract number 16037 for the record?
So said.
All in favor?
We need a second.
I'm sorry, do I have a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, so now we're going to go over to ordinance and resolutions for consideration. I'll turn this over to Tom for both of these. I'm sorry, I turned the first one over to Lisa and then the second one over to Tom.
Resolution 14 is actually part of the sewage facilities planning module for the Preserve at Horseshoe Meadows. Sorry. The board does not need to sign this. This is signed by the secretary. What it is, what we're looking for is the board to give permission for staff to send and submit to DEP for its approval.
Understood. Tom, do you have any concerns with this or?
No, this is a, I'm sorry, a standard resolution that must be submitted to DEP with the planning module for the online sewer facilities for the Preserve at Horseshoe Meadow. And this just indicates to DEP that the proposed sewage disposal method conforms with your ordinances and the 537 plan of the township.
Carl, any questions?
No. I make a motion that we approve the resolution for the planned revision of the, what's the name of the, of the Preserve at Horseshoe Meadows LLC.
Okay, and I'll second Resolution 14 of 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 8B is proposed Resolution 15 of 2022, which is a conditional preliminary plan of approval for development. We call them the Coslin Plank Farm. I think everyone can see that Mr. Winters is not here this morning and it was really unavoidable by him. He certainly wanted to attend. I became aware this morning that there may be circumstances where Chairman Scribner cannot participate in voting on this matter. So because of that, I would ask that the board table Resolution 15 of 2022. And I spoke briefly with Mr. Kelly, who's here this morning. He's the representative, the applicant. And Mr. Kelly would like the board to consider scheduling a special meeting sometime next week at the board's convenience, so you can consider and take action on this resolution.
Sure. I think probably, Monday's a holiday, correct?
Yes.
So I think we would have to probably shoot for Wednesday or Thursday morning to do so. I guess we'll all check schedules and find out if that works. And we can do the special meeting. We'll have to advertise it, obviously, and then we can do it here.
Yeah, I was thinking after Tom and I talked, is I'm going to be out of town next week, although I looked through the resolution, I discussed it with my clients, and all the conditions are acceptable to us. Scott will be back, so you may be able to attend the meeting.
Yeah, it could be one of your principles. Sure.
And you don't, no one needs to attend unless you have some issue.
Okay. That'd be great, whenever you can. I mean, and obviously, we discussed this project's been ongoing, the pandemic, the whole thing.
Yep.
We have certain milestones we'd like to hit, so move back.
Yep, understood. Yeah, and obviously, just not having our third supervisor, just put a little quandary in it today. Well, thank you very much for the-
I would just ask for a motion to table it until a future meeting to be scheduled.
Understood. So, well-
I move that we table Resolution 15 of 2022.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment on non-agenda items. Ms. Moser.
Good morning. Sandy Moser. Mr. O'Neal's presence this morning reminded me that the Bonsville Mill Park is a picnic stop for Chester County Day. We have two picnic tables. You'll see in my budget request for the gardens next year that I'm requesting five picnic tables, two for by the creek and three for up above the race. I'm wondering if there's any way, well, I'll talk to Jim and HUD, because I believe they could approve expenditures to a certain degree. But I'd really like to have those two picnic tables before October 1st. Our next Bonsville Mill meeting is the fourth Thursday in the month, and I don't remember what that is, but that's cutting it too darn close for a vote. I asked Matt if the picnic tables from Community Park could be borrowed and moved, and they're just too big. That can happen. So you'll be seeing this. I just wanted to clarify why I was making the request and it'll end up on Luke's desk.
Thank you very much. I guess to answer that question, do you know what your discretionary spending limits are for, something like that?
I don't expect that the tables are going to be at such a cost that we can't absorb that with our existing budget. So we will probably deal with that on the committee via email and ask for a formal purchase request through Luke. And it's certainly well below his spending authority.
Sure.
So I think we can approve it at that level, if that's okay with you.
Okay. Okay. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, notices the East Brandywine Foundation will meet immediately following this meeting. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Do we have to announce an executive?
For today?
No, for-
Did we announce our last one?
Did we do it the day of the meeting?
Well, let's just do it to cover bases. The board met an executive session following the last evening meeting.
August 18th.
August 18th. And the board, for legal and personnel issues. And the board will be meeting today in executive session, executive session following the meeting for legal issues. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.